Okay, so being 7:34, we'll call the Thursday, February 13th meeting of the Situate Planning Board to order. I need a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Having accepted the agenda, I'm going to ask that we modify it and have a discussion under the resignation of Eric. And what action needs to be done. I received Eric's resignation yesterday. Received yesterday, so the topic went to myself and the Planning Board and went to the town clerk.
Was it effective yesterday?
I'm sorry?
It was effective yesterday?
Effective immediately.
Immediately, okay.
Laura, I think, may have a discussion with the town clerk regarding the opening and what needed to be done, so that we can come back up and have that available, that slot available and identified it for the upcoming election. It was pointed out that because it's more than two months, there's an option that they would appoint somebody to fill in the remainder of Eric's term up until the election. What I'm going to suggest is that, given the workload that we've got and the way that we're laid out between now and the election, right, we really don't need an alternate. And it would seem a lot of work to go through to come back up, advertise the position, wait for a couple of weeks before we had applications, and then come back, interview somebody, then come back up and then have an appointment with somebody. By the time we do that, we're basically just probably a couple of weeks before the election. So if it's agreeable to the board, what I will do, I'll respect that. What I will ask Laura to do is prepare a letter to go from us to the board selectmen, indicating that we've identified that the position is open and that we would prefer to not appoint anybody until the upcoming election. Does that make sense?
So it would basically effectively be open, but Bob would still be the alternate, then?
Bob would still be the alternate.
Okay.
Would...
And in Eric's absence, he will be able to vote?
In Eric's absence, he will vote.
Okay.
He's been in board with everything except for 305 and 305 is comfortable with the fact that they only have four votes.
So, given all that, would the notice go out in some fashion that the position was open, so that somebody could pick up nomination papers and get their signatures and conceivably get on the ballot?
The short answer is yes. I'm not sure of the relative timing, because we would send the letter to the selectmen, so they would have it tomorrow.
Yeah, I had some discussion with Kathy about this. She was the one who brought up this situation where she believed the selectmen had to be notified and that there was this whole process of filling the vacancy, which, you know, we were kind of gonna, you know, I don't think we had ever, you know, the board had ever talked about doing that. So I wound up calling town council and just trying to straighten out some of the details on it. And he suggested that there wasn't, that once the letter's gone to the town clerk, that the position's vacant and it goes on the ballot. And there's nothing, you know, to do with the selectmen having, you know, any effect on that. So that should happen regardless. And I think she's on the same page with us about that, you know, as of today.
And if no one pulls papers for that position, does it just go on as a write-in situation?
Well, I guess it would, but I thought Bob was interested.
Oh, I see what you're saying, right. Well, then no one would pull, then we're going to have the alternate position open, then?
Yeah.
Until the election.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Well, actually...
I'm going to pull a Richard. I'm going to ask that we pull a Richard.
Okay, all right, I'm getting it now.
I'm going to need some clarification on that.
If I understand, at the...
You're going to run for...
At the election, there would be two positions open. The planning board position, whatever seat...
Exactly, yeah.
Because I'm up this year...
Well, and I'm up this year.
Bob is up this year, and then Eric would be up this year.
And the alternate?
No, the alternate is...
It's two years left of Eric's term that the person running for it is going to get.
Okay.
They get a two-year term, and Bob and Bill will get three-year terms.
Three years, yeah.
Oh, I see.
And then after the election, then we'll deal with the alternate, because there won't be an alternate anymore, because Bob Green will be a full member and not an alternate.
Right.
Ah. Yeah, you hang on to the alternate until you get elected.
Yeah, right. But you end up with an empty square, no matter what happens, right?
I'm just wondering, do I pull papers and get signatures, or do I just tell everybody to write me in?
You've been successful so far at the latter.
Yep.
But I think, going back to the original thing, so if there's no objection, then Laura and I will write the letter and we'll send it off, so that they'll have it first thing in the morning, or sometime tomorrow.
And this is the letter informing the selectmen that we prefer not to fill the slot?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's agreeable. And when is the election again? Is it April or May?
It's either May 31st or May 24th. They need the governor to sign a bill, because it overrides, has to override, I'm not sure, the charter or state law, something important. And it takes, you know, the governor to sign it. So it was going to be on May 24th, but that's Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah.
They think it's going to be difficult to get people to work for the election, and, you know, they don't want to have it then. So they're going to make it on the 31st, which is the next weekend.
Okay.
And when do nominations close?
The 21st of April.
April 7th, you have to have the signatures in.
Okay, have we resolved that? The next item on the agenda is the zoning workshop for the Village Business Overlay District. My background, what we've got is we had a citizens article that came in at the last town meeting, looking to expand and make some minor changes to the Village Overlay District. When we reviewed it, on a parallel path, the Economic Development Committee has come back up and is undergoing a report to take a look at, among other things, growth opportunities within the town. And what we had suggested in the town meeting supported was to basically postpone action on the business overlay district until we had a chance to look at it. And at that point, that brings us to where we are here tonight. We've looked at the report, we've looked at some changes to be made into the business overlay district. And what we've got is, this is the workshop to discuss the changes that were being proposed. Is that a fair assessment, Laura?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't I ask, if you're just going to just walk through what the changes are, and then we can go into the actual discussion?
Okay. I was just going to talk for a couple minutes about kind of the genesis of this district in the first place, and then go through it really quickly, and then talk about what the changes are going to be, you know, if they're voted, you know, as they're proposed right now. So back around late 1990s, early 2000, the issue that was kind of gripping Situate was the train. The train, you know, being extended from Braintree basically down to Situate. And there was a lot of concern about development coming around the stations and what that development was going to be like. Was it going to be, you know, something awful, or was there going to be some kind of opportunity to get hold of the situation and, you know, kind of guide it to be something positive for the town? So the planning board got some money from MAPC, I think it was $30,000, and used that to hire the Cecil Group, who's a, you know, well-known, you know, design and, you know, they do, you know, a lot of streetscape planning and neighborhood planning, you know, kinds of, that's the kind of planning that they do. So they were hired around 2003, 2004, to do some charrettes and neighborhood meetings in Green Bush and North Situate. They had already done the harbor, that was kind of a separate piece that they did. So out of that came a couple of reports, which are still on the town website. And some of the recommendations of those reports were that the town look for some money and do some zoning that would have some design guidelines, it would have some affordability requirements, and it would, you know, be mixed-use, transit-oriented, and it would, you know, fit with small, you know, developed villages, but it wouldn't be overwhelming in density, it wouldn't be out of character with those villages, with some of the little historic buildings and those types of things that you find there. So the planning board hired, well, they applied for a grant, they got the grant, and they hired Larry Coff, and he teamed up with Larry Bluestone, who's the man who's doing the illustrations right now. And they drafted some zoning, they had many public hearings, you know, several, you know, big workshops with everybody in, everybody who was anybody in Green Bush seemed to go to those meetings. And the same thing with, you know, the other villages. And out of that came the Village Business Overlay District, and this was adopted in 2006. And, you know, it's been kind of sitting on the books. One of the reasons, I think, that not much has been done with it has just been that the real estate market kind of tanked during that period. So now we've got, you know, one application in front of the planning board for it, and there have been other property owners that have come in and had, you know, several informal discussions, I think. So...
Can I ask you just a clarifying question? I know that that's the one that's before the board for Green Bush, but hasn't there been others that have used this for the harbor, or not?
No, there was a lot of development in the harbor, and I think it was encouraged by the feeling that the town would be open to more intense development. I think there was kind of a psychological, like a psychic connection, but it wasn't a direct connection. That was all done under approval by the zoning board, and it was really, you know, didn't use this very much.
Okay.
So just to go through it really quickly, it does require a special permit from the planning board. There are a number of kind of special requirements for it. There's some special design requirements where you can't have like an extended facade, they want you to have a certain amount of glass in the front of the building, they want the roof to have like a roof pitch that blends with these kind of Victorian, you know, roof, the look of those, you know, older roofs. And there's also a reduction in parking for the villages that have the train, because the idea is that, you know, if you've got a couple, that maybe one person will be taking the train and they can use one car. There are also some affordability requirements, where 15% of the units have to be affordable over, you know, over eight units, under eight units, it doesn't matter, but if, you know, you have, you know, any, you know, real number of units going in, you have to have some affordable. There's an open space requirement, that there has to be, you know, 20% open space. And there is a density bonus that the planning board can give if there's a public benefit. And I think the idea was that there would be like a substantial public benefit, like creation of a park, or replacement of a water main, I mean, you know, a lot of water mains, that this wouldn't be something that would be like a shoo-in, it would be something that the applicants would have to work to get. So, you know, I mean, a lot of that, you know, depends on how it plays out with the board and with the applicant, and, you know, you just have to kind of, you know, come to grips with making sure that that happens the right way. So I think that's basically, that's basically it. One of the other parts of this was to have the buildings up near the street and have the parking behind, so the front setbacks are different. And, you know, the density was, the base density was 16 units per 40,000 square feet, which is a lot higher than, you know, what was existing, you know, which was never going to encourage development, because it was only four for 40,000 square feet, so. So having had this in the books, on the books for a while, there, you know, we got this petition last fall to extend it to the far side of the Driftway from Green Bush, the kind of, you know, opposite side of the Driftway, where you have South Shore Auto Parts, Dunkin' Donuts, Herringbrook Mall, and then a couple of the properties behind. And there were a couple of reasons why I didn't go forward, which I think Bill kind of summarized. And one of them was that, you know, you just wanted to spend some more time thinking about it. And another was that the Economic Development Committee was coming out with some reports about Green Bush, and you want, you want Green Bush and the whole rest of the town's economic base, and you wanted to see what, how those reports came out. So I did email around the drafts, which aren't really, haven't really been released yet, but hopefully in March, those will be in front of the selectmen and they'll be, you know, talking about them at a meeting. You know, I'm thinking it's pretty likely that's going to happen before, you know, well before a town meeting, you know, knock on wood. So one of the things that they're looking at is trying to, in these reports, and I think it dovetails with what happened in the discussions last fall, was that there's an opportunity to take that intersection, where you have the Driftway and the new Driftway coming together, where you've got the traffic light, and you've got the parking lots for the T on one side, and it's a little bit nondescript there, but to kind of make that like a real center, you know, real kind of center of activity. And that's where, you know, we got this board, which they loaned us, of, you know, potential redevelopment of South Shore Auto Parts. And it's, you know, it's really a transformation when you look at it, it's completely different, it's, you know, three stories and so on. And I think you can envision just a small area where you would have dense development like that, where people could, you know, use the traffic light and the crosswalk to get across to the T station. You know, maybe they could walk over to Morning Glory's, or they could, you know, walk somewhere and have some services, similar to the harbor, but not in the harbor. They might get some water views, because you've got the first Herringbrook in the back. You know, it could be a really pleasant little, more intensely built-up area. I think you can also kind of try to imagine the Driftway coming off of the rotary with, you know, some more trees on the opposite side, and make it, you know, a little more attractive and appealing as a gateway, and, you know, make that whole area, you know, maybe, you know, a little more appealing to people to live in, appealing to people to invest in. So I think those are, you know, all kind of pieces of this, but, you know, obviously you can't do it all at once. So the zoning, what the zoning would do, I think you all have this legal ad with the, all the articles in the state that they're in right now. So the first part of this is the map change, and when you look at the map, what this change would do would be, it would include virtually all the properties that were in the petitioned article. The, I forgot to mention the square-ish medical building that Drift, I believe it's called the Harbor Medical Building, which is, you know, kind of an interesting building, but someone could conceivably, you know, take that, maybe buy, you know, some of the Russo's property, where you have the bus, you know, the bus storage. And I believe that is in some kind of, you know, probate at this point. There's also the, South Shore Auto Parts is up at the front, and then you've got the Dunkin' Donuts, which probably isn't going to redevelop, but it's right in the general area. And then Herringbrook Mall, you know, that might not redevelop either, but, you know, it sort of gives a little bit of critical mass to this area. Then on the opposite side, you've got the two MBTA parking lots. The parking lot on the left, on the west side of the Driftway, probably, you know, nothing's ever going to happen to that one, because they need the parking there, but it makes it all kind of contiguous. And, you know, who knows in 50 years if somebody wants to build a garage and put some other uses there? It might be nice to have the zoning there. On the opposite side is the MBTA parking lot, where I believe it's public knowledge, because they've been in town hall looking at our documents and...
It's on their website, I was checking. It's on the MBTA website.
Good, okay. So that is something that they're looking at auctioning in the next, I believe, in the next few months.
Yeah, the status says pending, or was it RFP pending, or something like that? Like, they don't have any documents available, but they're, you know, it says status is coming soon.
Okay, coming soon.
Yeah.
Coming soon to a parking lot near you.
Whatever that means.
So they have, you know, had some conversations with me, and I think they're very interested in what happens with this zoning, because if the zoning passes, it's definitely going to add to the opportunities for, you know, what you could do with that property. So that kind of takes care of the map. And then with the text changes, one of the things that had gotten a little confusing initially with this bylaw was whether you were approving a single building or something else, because we talked about special permits for mixed-use buildings. So that's been changed, so that it's now talking about a mixed-use development. And we're defining that as either one or more structures in a small development, but you have to have at least one of them actually be mixed-use. It doesn't say that the mixed-use has to be the one on the street, you know, right up close to the street. I mean, that seems like that would logically happen, and you wouldn't have to spell that out. But, you know, even with some of the informal discussions and with, you know, the proposal that, you know, you're reviewing right now, there are structures in there that don't have any retail or office on the first floor. And you'd sort of hate to force someone to do that in case they couldn't really market, you know, that retail, in case there really wasn't enough demand for it. And talking with the EDC about this last night, they feel that the demand really isn't there for, you know, for that much, you know, first-floor retail. So, you know, I mean, I know, I got some comments, I got, you know, one email saying, "Well, how come it's being changed, and the retail is great, and now you're taking that away?" Well, you know, I think the problem is that it's really hard to make it, to make it happen. If it's going to happen, it'll happen anyway, but, you know, to require it, I think maybe, you know, just more than you can actually get. And then the other things that were changed had to do with...
And I'm sorry, just on clarification.
Yeah.
What's the number there? Is it under, I was wondering, you said the changes to the building as opposed to the, or the development, is that in 560.1, or?
No, that's in 560.3. Right now, it says a mixed-use building is one of the uses permissible by special permit in 560.3.
Oh, yeah.
And that's going to change and say a mixed-use development. And the rest of it's all going to stay the same, just, it's just going to change from building to development.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I see, okay, never mind, thank you.
Okay. So then, the next part that was going to change was the part where you can require, you know, the bylaw would require 50% minimum of the first floor to be retail. And there are certain locations where that's going to be a requirement, and I think we probably, you probably want to talk about these a little bit and make sure that we've got the right ones and there aren't others that we should have. So the ones that would be, would be in here would be Front Street, so basically, you know, everything on Front Street, on the main street in Situate Harbor. In North Situate, it would be, you know, Booth Hill Road, which, you know, I'm not sure if that's the right one or not. So, you know, Booth Hill Road is sort of, it's just one or two buildings...
One flashing light up from Henry Turner.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's just one building in from Country Way, you know, going up Booth Hill, one or two buildings.
Professional building, or...
Yeah.
Yeah. And maybe that's not that...
The rest of it's residential there, right?
Yeah.
Is the address of that Booth Hill, or is it Country Way, that building?
I think, I'm thinking of like the Pipes Dentist Building, I think that's on Booth Hill.
Yeah.
So, you know, one or two of those buildings, maybe that's not really walkable up there, and maybe that shouldn't be in here.
Really isn't. By the time you get to the property line of that, that sort of commercial office building that used to be a funeral home there...
Yeah, that's the one, yeah.
It's really residential.
Well, it's walkable to the Village Center, though. Yeah, I mean, up from Mary Lou's.
Is there a sidewalk?
Yes.
There is, okay.
It's across from Mary Lou's, yeah, there's a, is it that furniture shop, or what's in the dry cleaners, I can't remember.
There's the upholstery shop that Ann has.
Yeah.
And then you get, Ann's upholstery shop is on the others, the other side.
On the same side as Mary Lou's. Okay. Oh, that's right.
There's, it used to be real estate, but it's something else now.
But then you get the auto place, and then you get the dry cleaners.
Well, you're just specifying, like, for instance, to use the example of Gannett. I mean, you're not saying all of Gannett, all the way up to, you know, north, or, what's it called, the Glades area, or whatever, it stops there by the ocean?
Yeah.
Mine it, thank you. So, you know, you haven't really specified, per se, so it could just be a very small...
Well, it's pretty much all of North Situate, you know, all of the, they're part of the business district in North Situate. You know, that's what we have in here.
This is restricted by having to be in a business district.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So it's just these roads as the...
It's whatever's in the business district.
...village overlay district.
In other words, Gannett doesn't go down as far as I, it goes as far as Anderson Fuel.
Right, which makes sense.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it, is that where it ends, where the business district ends? Okay. So this is saying that, you know, all of Gannett up to Anderson Fuel would have to have 50% retail on the first floor, if they were going to, you know, I mean, I think you have to kind of make this flying leap to sometime when there's going to be sewer in North Situate, and you're going to be able to redevelop those properties, you know, which obviously isn't the case now, so...
So the idea is that each of these roads, to the extent that they're covered by the business district, would be restricted to at least 50% retail, or required to have 50% retail?
In this mixed-use, you know, situation.
So do you happen to know, like, going up on Booth Hill, how far up that is?
I think it's about two houses up. I'm not sure if it goes beyond the Pipes and the, I don't think it goes beyond the Pipes and the funeral, the old funeral home. I think that's it.
All right, well, that seems reasonable, then.
So, so anyway, and then we've got the, you know, we've got Green Bush, where we've got Country Way, which is kind of your main, you know, backbone in Green Bush, and not Ford Place or Drew Place, though. I mean, those, you could conceivably, you could have, you'd have a mixed-use building, but you could have like all offices in it, as opposed to retail. And that seemed kind of reasonable, because you're way kind of down the road, out of the way. So you might have like a doctor's office in there or something, but you wouldn't necessarily have people walking in there to shop and buy a newspaper or something. And then I think the part where maybe we need to do just a little more is...
Does that include Stockbridge?
Um, no, it doesn't, you know...
Isn't there a little section right there in Stockbridge? Or am I looking at it wrong? What's this?
There's Union Street, where you've got the, where you've got Anderson...
This is Union, right?
Yeah, so he's right, this is Stockbridge here, right? Or that's the...
No, this is like Ford Place over here, and this is Stockbridge over here, isn't it?
Right, but the bridge is right here, and this is the bakery, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can't, you can't get to these, I don't think, from, can you, uh...
Yeah, you go over the bridge and turn right.
This is the, this is the... This is the train track here and this is, okay, the bridge is here, the train is going like this.
Okay. This is Stockbridge?
Yeah, that's Stockbridge.
Okay.
And it's actually kind of, you know, cut off around the train.
Let me look at the other map. It's easier to see.
So, yeah, so Stockbridge, you know, really isn't, you know, isn't in it.
Oh, yeah, that's on the other side of the train, I see.
Um...
Hmm, okay.
You know, but maybe we should add in there the new Driftway. I mean, we've got the Driftway, but I think...
Oh, there's just a little section of Stockbridge Road that's on this. This is...
It's the bridge, right?
Yeah, but it's not, like, if this is the case, this is what I'm thinking, this is the road, here's Stockbridge, like you said, so it's really not accessible. It's on the other side of the train.
This is Stockbridge coming up to the Country Way though. This is Stockbridge.
Right, right.
So this little section right there is Stockbridge?
Right, but that's the bridge.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, I think that's the actual bridge.
Okay.
That's the bridge over the, the train tracks.
Yeah.
So once you're on the other side of the bridge, you really have no access over here.
To that, yeah.
So, yeah, I would think that on New Driftway, you'd want to say that so that if they built something along New Driftway, you'd want 50%.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I think we want to add New Driftway in there.
That would, that would assume you're in the train parking lot somewhere, right?
Well, most part. Like right here, right? This is New Driftway, so this is the train parking lot to the left. To the right is the uphill.
Right.
Whereas the T, where the T is going to potentially auction off that...
This is the animal hospital here.
Right. Well, and this is the Celtic Pause.
Yeah.
So if you did something along here, you'd want retail facing the train, basically.
I think that one is called, is still called the Driftway and the New Driftway is like over here.
Uh, yeah, it's all very confusing.
It's very confusing.
Yeah, the bottom road says the New Driftway, right?
Yeah, so maybe it would be Driftway, whatever.
Yeah, well, I think the idea of including both of them, I think, makes a lot of sense. So we'll add in, you know, the New Driftway. So anyways, so that was that change. And then the final change was to add something about frontage, which we talked about the last time. And that was to say, you know, to add frontage as a dimensional requirement because it's not in there now and to say that the requirement is for an amount sufficient in the opinion of the planning board to provide adequate access for the proposed use, not less than 20 feet. And that was your wordsmith thing. So, I don't know if you all have any questions about any of this before, you know, throwing it, you know, open to the public?
I think we've got it pretty well covered. I think the discussion we had last week to resolve the 20 feet, I think, covered what I thought needed to be done.
Yeah, I think that it's not so much on the, I'd say the specifics, but more the mechanics of it, is that if we could, once we get the final wordage or wording, word, that we have like, okay, what, this is the existing bylaw and then we print out exactly what the new, what we're proposing and we highlight each word that changed so that people have an understanding so that...
Like that?
Exactly, exactly.
So with the red line.
Well, that's something that we should probably talk about a little bit because the advisory committee is going to, you know, look at the articles on February 20th. The selectmen are looking at them on the 18th. The advisory committee is looking at them on the 20th. If any or all want to come to any of those meetings, I don't know, you know, I don't know how you feel about it, but...
No, as incompetent as they feel the planning board is, I'd be happy to represent this.
Okay, okay.
Well, I'd be happy, as long as I know about those, if you could send an email to remind me or to remind us.
Okay, well, yeah, see, yeah, I, however it works out, you know, would, would be fine. But the reason I'm bringing that up is that they wanted the old text and they wanted everything, you know, redlined and, you know, to show what had been added. It's not hard on this one. It's not hard on the medical marijuana. On the water resource, it's like, ugh. But I think, I think we got it okay. It's just, it's, you know, that's what people want. You know, that's what someone got up at the last town meeting and said that it had always been done that way and that's the way we always needed to do it. So, you know, if you think that's what we should do, then, you know, that's, you know, that's what we'll do. And I'll send them around so everybody can see what they look like and if they look too crazy, you know, let me know and we'll do something else, but...
If we can get the advisory board to print out the red line in their booklet, that would take care of it.
That would be great, yeah.
Because that would obviate the need for a handout and it would put documentation in two places, one in the warrant, which would give the wording of the article and then it would give you the advisory book that would give you the changes that preceded the work to put the article in the warrant.
Well, I think the map probably is not going to go well in the book, I'm not sure. But we have like 500 maps printed already for the Water Resource Protection District. So I was going to, you know, assume that would be a handout and maybe some kind of a summary. Because I think you need to kind of help people feel comfortable with these things because zoning is just so, like, abstract for a lot of people. Not for you guys.
We live for this.
Our lifeblood.
Let me, can you give the comments or observations to the board? And we open it up to the public, people who risked life and limb coming out in this treacherous evening. Identify yourself if you've got any comments that you want to make.
My name is Jim Sandel, architect and planner in the office in Cambridge. And I've been working over the past few years with Chris Ford, whose property on Country Way, I believe is the project here at the building. And together with Bob Walsh, Francesca Perdini, were extremely interested in the changes and the zoning as it will affect the MBTA parking lot. So that's why we're here to listen to you have ideas. It all sounds good. Sounds great.
Thank you. Yeah, we looked at the other areas where we originally did the, came in with the overlay district and we decided that what we, what we did off originally was, was if we went too big, we figured we'd have difficulty in selling it at town meeting and we'd lose it. So if we confine the area immediately to a smaller identifiable area, then we felt that would pass the town meeting, which it did. And now we're, we're coming back up, even though the motivation's a little, probably a little different than what we thought originally to do it, but if we were looking to expand it.
Well, the board came up. Meeting, we had previously, you mentioned that, I believe it's an MAPC townwide plan or of the demographics and kind of looking at Situate as a whole. Is that draft available? Is that out or what's the status of that?
That's the one we were talking about a few minutes ago and the Economic Development Committee is in the process of finalizing it.
I see, okay.
And I believe they're going to finalize it February 26th, but the selectmen haven't really, haven't really met to discuss it. It's going to be presented at a selectman's meeting probably in March, definitely before town meeting, I think.
I'm Bob Walsh. I'm a commercial real estate consultant out of Hingham and I've done a lot of transit-oriented development over the years. What is, what is the income criteria and the affordability?
It's the same as, as a 40B. So it's probably around, I don't know, 60, 70,000 for a, you know, small family. It's not low income, it's, it's moderate income.
Right. Thank you. Anything else? Any other comments from the board?
I have a question really for Bill and Laura. Since if I got this right, this was, the current village business overlay district was voted at town meeting in 2006. Is that correct?
I think it was 2006, yeah.
Okay. Since I had just, I don't know if I was here at that particular time, but I don't remember the meeting, so. Were there, do you guys remember any particular comments or, I don't know, vocal opposition at the time that you went before the town? And, you know, when people came up to the microphone, was there anything that maybe we should be aware of? Just curious.
Yeah.
You went relatively close, I guess, I remember.
Well, one of the selectmen was very adamantly opposed to it.
Okay, I think I know.
And I don't know if he's happy, you know, or how he feels now, you know, I really...
Was there a reason? Let me know.
I think it was just a concern that there was going to be just density that was kind of way beyond what, you know, what he personally thought it should be through that area, so...
Okay. Well, again, I'll go on record of it, I'll be happy to be there with Bill and, and support that at the selectman meeting when this comes before and try to explain our reasoning.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I haven't really been always like on the, I don't know, things seem like they're not always as easy as you would think they were going to be in some of these fours. So, I don't know, I leave it up to Bill, whatever you think is best.
Do we anticipate any pushback on, for instance, the 20 feet? The reduction to a 20-foot minimum frontage? I know that was discussed at some point in a couple of different contexts.
Well, we actually put the minimum in, right?
Right.
Yeah. Before, the way it was written, it could be even smaller.
Well, it actually, the way it was interpreted, it went with the underlying zoning, which I believe was 60.
Yeah.
So it had to be, it sounds that way, but it actually had to be larger. And there was an idea that you could use the Stockbridge Road Bridge as, as frontage, but, yeah, I don't know, that really would work. So I think there are probably just a few lots where it would, it would have any effect.
But it does, there's not a specific number. In other words, it doesn't say that it has to be 20 or it doesn't have to be 30. It gives you 20 as a minimum, but it says it has to meet the requirements of the...
The planning board.
Right.
Yeah.
But it does say it can't be any less than 20.
Can't be any less than 20.
Yeah. Well, 20 for a driveway is, you know, getting pretty narrow.
Well, and if I remember right, when we went before the, the town meeting last, was it the fall? I guess, it's all, seems like a blur to me. Didn't we actually, the wording was just that at the discretion of a planning board? Like it wasn't even a minimum, right?
I don't think we ever brought anything forward on that.
Oh.
I think we were looking to eliminate the one sentence about the underlying zoning.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was, that was the gist of what we wanted to do, that entire article was eliminate that art, that one line.
Yeah.
So now we're coming back, we're keeping that and coming back with specifying what it is as frontage because that was the, the one, one thing that really needed to be specified.
Right.
Yeah. Because I think if people see that being taken out, I think that might make people nervous, you know, that you're, you're kind of just going wild down there.
Well, that's what I thought.
You don't want people to think that.
The wording was, we took it out and then the, it was something like at the discretion of the planning board or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. I think that was, it just sounded a little bit too, like, wide open to...
Yeah, right.
A little keyhole, lots and stuff.
You mean, just have the 20 feet been open enough?
Yeah.
But I mean, you look at what it's opened up to and I mean, if it ends up that the 20 feet is, is, is a difficult spot in terms of traffic or anything else, then, then obviously the kind of key has to be bigger. Because I think we set precedent in terms of what we're looking at in terms of traffic, traffic control on particular sites like we did with 50 Country Way.
Yeah. This, this will be a nasty intersection, no matter what you do.
With the train.
Yeah, when the train lets out, it's just pandemonium out there.
Really? Pandemonium?
Well, hopefully with...
You're good in Boston?
Hopefully with people, you know, not having to have, you know, both have cars, I mean, and being able to walk across, I don't know how much, you know, how much traction that's, that's ultimately going to get, but that's the idea that, so, I mean, they're right on the bike path.
I understand that, but...
Yeah, I know.
Frankly, half, half of the people who come to Green Bush come from Marshfield, right?
I don't think it's that many, but you think it's that many?
Quite a few, yeah.
Okay.
Need the Marshall people to come up and use Green Bush?
It's a lot of people.
Big number.
Can we, are we allowed to quote the study that hasn't been released yet?
Well, I think by the time it's, I mean, sure, yes. And I think by the time of town meeting, it's, it's going to be very quotable.
Okay. Well, for the, the audience, we were able to look at a, it's still in a draft form, but we were able to review this study that the MAPC did or for the EDC. And I remember one of the things they had mentioned was that, I was kind of surprised that actually Green Bush was the highest traffic count of all the stations on the Green Bush line. Like it had the most boardings and, what do they call it? Deboardings? Like plane deplane? But, and actually second in the system was North Situate.
Yeah.
Which was kind of surprising, but, so there is certainly, you know, quite a bit of volume there, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
No, it's significant. I ride it pretty much every day, so I see it all the time.
I did actually, it was interesting. I, I think it was Monday, I drove through the lots, it was like Monday around 2:00 in the afternoon, just to see if all the cars that are on the upper level could fit on the lower level. And they can, but it's going to be tight.
Well, it depends because if it's loaded up in the morning and then by the time you got there, people had taken a train and left open spaces in the lot, they're not necessarily there in the morning.
That's true, but I guess even as, even in the afternoon such as that, I noticed that, I said, oh, you know what, this lower lot, if they do decide to sell the upper lot and it's redeveloped, the lower lot seems like it will be pretty full.
Yeah. Oh, it definitely will. It doesn't look like, I guess I'm looking at this, it doesn't look like this, is this including all of the MBT lot, MBTA lot?
Yeah. Yep. So it's up to Situate Concrete Pipe and then over to the, the transfer station.
Yeah, so the transfer station is here.
Right.
Situate Concrete Pipe is right here.
Yeah. So it does pick up that whole piece.
Their, you know, discussion was that they were going to require that room be left for 200 parking spaces to be constructed, if they had to be, you know...
So they're not going to sell this whole parcel then?
Well, I think they're going to sell it, but there's going to have to be some restriction on part of it.
Some kind of parking easement or something?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, what you'd, you'd hate to have happen is that they need the money right now and they're selling this, but they, they can't really, you know, do it from the, the parking standpoint and then their car is parked all up and down Driftway and, you know, all over the place.
That would be crazy.
So, anyway.
Okay, well, that's interesting. Yeah, the, like I said, the arm of MBTA onto Transit Realty, which is the arm of the MBTA that I guess is tasked with all of the transit...
Oh, yeah, there were the people that were in town hall.
Yeah. Functions. Like I said, there was just a line. It had a little bit about Green Bush and the facility and had a picture of it and actually had the, the lot itself actually outlined and what it was, a little bit about it. But there was no specifics or RFP or anything like that that mentioned about that there had to be a certain restriction on it. At least yet. I'm sure that will be posted.
Okay.
Good. Anything else? Just one other question. The way this is laid out, is there, is there some kind of, no, I'm just thinking about, okay, you've got one parcel here that might be developed out of the whole thing. Is there some kind of design review that's sort of tied in, that ties it in somehow or ties in the look and feel from, like, if somebody developed over on the, on the new MBTA site? Because one of the things that the EDC had sort of indicated was that, you know, this, this Driftway approach is sort of the entrance to Situate, right? Sort of the...
The gateway.
Right. So is there, is there some concept that, you know, there can be some oversight about how that gets developed to sort of maintain a look and feel of some kind?
Well, we have.
Yeah, well, beyond the design criteria that are in here and the design review committee, there hasn't been like a, like a master plan for that intersection or anything like that. I mean, that's something the town could probably do. Yeah, I don't know if we can get out ahead of the MBTA at this point, but I think we could, you know, maybe ask them to do it if we were going to really step up to the plate, you know, ask them to, to look at this intersection and do some kind of a, you know, some kind of a design program for how, you know, the whole thing like coordinates and.
I just got the sense that was going to be a recommendation from the EDC, that, that we somehow sort of brand that area as you come through it as looking and feeling like a gateway to the town of Situate.
Well, yeah, they were talking about that a little bit last night and they've talked about that, so, no, I, I think that's a good point, I think it would take some, some money, you know, to go, you know, to go towards it, you know, whether some of that, I don't know whether the town would have to put up some of that or whether, you know, we could get some of it from the MBTA, but it would be nice to get it before, you know, somebody starts developing that property.
Yeah, I was thinking more in terms of, not, not in terms of money, which obviously have to happen to this, but in terms of the flexibility to, to, if we have the money and design it, that we ensure that what gets built there sort of matches that look and feel or matches the, you know, kind of the concept of the gateway or whatever.
Well, they, they were expressing some of that at the meeting last night, and there was a lot of concern that, that this might, you know, kind of get away from the town and so on, and I think it's, you know, it's really going to be up to, to you as a board to make sure that you do get, you know, what, what they say they're, they're going to give you, and they, there aren't.
Yeah, that's where I'm going.
There's a definite plan and.
What I'm saying is, in modifications we're proposing here, are you, are you comfortable that it gives us that flexibility?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be great to get some kind of overall, you know, master plan for it, but as far as, as controlling each parcel, I think so, I think, I think, you know, you get a plan, they, you know, what you're approving is what's shown on the plan, and then I think you really have to tie some of the permits to, you know, making sure that everything is built, I mean, for instance, on the one, on the south side of the Driftway where you got the condominiums, but you didn't get the commercial building in the front, I think there, there needed to be some kind of a tie that, you know, the certificates of occupancy wouldn't be issued or, you know, something like that, and that was hard to get, I think we talked about that, I think we talked about that, I know there's been, you know, resistance to tying certificates of occupancy to things that, you know, maybe are hard to control, but, yeah, I, I think there, there has to be something you can do, either make someone put, put up a performance bond, that they're going to construct something, or, you know, otherwise.
But things like, you know, sidewalk design and signage and those kinds of things, we have the ability to, to manage.
Oh, yeah.
The way this is set up.
Oh, yeah, I mean, just like with the subdivisions, where you've got the, the signs for the open space and, you know, you're looking and seeing what those signs are going to look like and, yeah, I mean, I think you're going to have to be, you know, as assertive as, you know, you usually are with, you know, with applicants.
Okay, the real question I was asking is, is there anything in here that sort of limits us from doing that, right?
I, I don't think so, I mean, I got that same question last night and I.
We have the ability to do it, and we get general guidelines to talk about what, how long the bullet could be in the frontage and that kind of thing.
I think there.
The rest of it is the same as what we do now with a flexible or any other special permit.
Yeah, and I wanted to say, like, I think sometimes it's dangerous to write too much of that in, like to say, oh, it's got to be shingle style, it's got to be, you know, painted blue.
That's not what I'm talking about, yeah, I'm not talking about those kind of, I'm talking about just making sure that we as a board have the flexibility to require that. If, if, for instance, we got $30,000 or $40,000 to design the gateway coming in and it required a certain kind of lighting, certain kind of, I mean, it's set up a certain kind of lighting for the whole area, certain kind of pedestrian access, those kinds of things, then we'd want to integrate those into whatever gets, you know, approved.
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure we.
You got a comment?
We have the authority in here to do that.
I, I think you could absolutely do that, I think, you know, there's ways that you can, you can promote that by, you know, putting it on the website, having it available in the building department, so people see it, and they can't claim that they were blindsided by all these demands or, you know, whatever. When I was, was at the EDC last night, there was a little bit of confusion that this was somehow going to be like, like a 40B, you know, that's what, you know, was discussed, and I think there was just a misunderstanding that with, you know, 40B comprehensive permit, the state is trying to promote affordable housing and they override local zoning, and that's how.
Right.
That gets approved, but this is completely different, I mean, this is local zoning, you know, it's, yeah, much more enforceable.
We got a comment over here.
Well, I just, I think it's a great idea, I think that, what my gut feel is, that it has to be something that's a gesture that runs the whole way from the beginning of the gateway, that runs through it and what kind of elements are going to work, you mentioned.
I would agree.
Landscaping, but I think that has to be articulated in some detail.
Well, that's where Laura was going to get all the money to do that, so.
Well, I'm thinking about that meals tax, you know?
But, no, I agree, and that was the thing that personally held me up from the last time it came forward was, how do we make sure if, if what the EDC is talking about, which they're now talking about, that this needs to have some kind of look and feel, be the gateway to, to Situate, then we should figure out what that is and then ask each individual owners they're developing to meet those standards. My question was really more around, does the planning board have the authority to set those standards and enforce them?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, it's, plus it's a four out of five vote, so if they don't get, you know, one of the four votes, then, you know, that's, and it's, it's very discretionary. But now I'm starting to think about, you know, sources of, of money for some kind of a master plan for that, I mean, I think that's a terrific idea that you have.
I think the EDC was talking about that kind of, you know, that, that was one of the things that was coming out of their evaluation, was that we should somehow figure out how to make that more of a gateway.
Well, and even on, excuse me, a bigger scale, not only Green Bush, but like, I look at that and I'm trying to transpose it to the harbor, there's not really a master plan per se, in the same kind of way that you're talking about, that if someone were to put a new building where the gas station is, that they have to have a certain amount of sidewalk, or a certain type of sidewalk or street lighting or whatever, so it's the same situation in the harbor that we have there is what you're referring to.
Yeah, we're just tackling this one first.
Yeah.
I think we have the ability to hold it to a standard, we just don't have the standard.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it should be on our list, I mean, I'd certainly, you know, wait until the EDC came back and gave us their final recommendations and stuff, but it sounds like that was one of the key elements, so.
Right.
Anything else?
Not here.
We need to vote anything that is voted publication?
No, we, you know, we, it's been published, so, you know, we'll make that change to add in the new Driftway, and I think we can, we can catch it before it goes to publication in the warrant.
Okay.
So.
Okay. I, I had one clarification, and this is just, I think I know the answer to this, but I'll just clarify it anyway, on the map itself, I know it doesn't include the, was it the I, what's it called, the I building there on the corner?
Yeah.
Where you first come into.
Milliken.
Yeah, that's it, but does, it includes what was the paint store, but it's now the burger bar, right?
Yeah.
That parcel is included.
He's already in it.
Okay, that's what I thought, all right. That's all.
It's just this little, just this little piece, right, it's just this building?
Well, it's actually, that is zoned residential.
There's the other side right there.
He's got to be like captured.
That's him back there, the burger bar, right?
What?
The building, I think, I think that one is called the Driftway Medical Center, the one that's on the left-hand side where, you know, Milliken and some of those other people are.
Yeah.
You know, I think there's got to.
Because there's a little.
Be a time when that gets its own business.
Right, right.
Well, at some point, that whole area should be zoned business, I mean, if you think about all the special permits that exist in there.
Which area?
Yeah.
Turning on, on the other side.
Oh, around Rotary, yeah.
Around the Rotary.
Looking that down, down Justice Cushing.
Well, you know, if you're designing the gateway, that's probably where you start, is at the Rotary, right?
Yeah.
That also was mentioned in the preliminary draft, about those businesses along the, the south side of 3A right there.
I mean, there's almost every one of those, whether you're talking to Dr. Hyde, you're talking to PJs, I mean, they're all special permits.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Shall we move on to something else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Miss Fall, mate.
It's interesting, the people that came were from out of there.
Cambridge.
Yeah, people were invited from, you know, Chickvegan stuff by and said he was very interested, so.
Okay, so now, this gives us an opportunity to pick up a few minutes, do we have minutes that we need to approve?
We do.
Those that we need to pay? Do we have reports we need to listen to? Two out of three's not bad.
Pardon me.
How did the EDC go with?
I wasn't here.
Okay. Yeah, it was good.
Did they talk about a timeframe of, when they're going to, what they're going to do with their report?
Um, yeah, they're, they're going to have a special meeting on the 26th to finalize the report.
26th of February?
The 26th of February, and then it's going to the, you know, it's, it's got to be formatted by MAPC because the tables are getting chopped up and so on, and then it's going to the selectmen. So, it did get sent around to Tricia and it'll be distributed to the selectmen beforehand because that's what she had asked for, so.
Did Monty Newman talk about his?
Yeah, he did, he did a lot of work, he did a really nice report, he went and talked to everybody in the harbor, or, you know, large number of business owners in the harbor and.
Very good report, it ended up, I didn't know whether that's.
Collected a lot of.
Available for public distribution?
Um, I don't know, yeah.
I'll check with Monty and find out, if it is, then I'll forward it to the other members of the planning board.
Yeah.
Monty Newman is, he's a member of the EDC.
He applied to be on the planning board at the same time you did.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember.
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought his report was pretty well-written, I think documented all the.
It's a little discouraging that there's so much negative opinion about town government among the business people, but, but I'm biased, so.
Since we're speaking of reports, I noticed in the Mariner, they mentioned about that the report had been, was finalized for the 3A study from Henry Turner up into Cohasset.
Oh, yeah.
Is that something that you have gotten a copy of or you could share with us electronically?
Where did you see that?
It was in the Mariner.
Yeah, it was in the Mariner.
Okay, well, I didn't finish reading the Mariner, I got to the editorial section and stopped.
Yeah, I can certainly do that, I'll send that around to everybody, it's mostly about Cohasset.
Right, but there were some recommendations.
This much about Situate, and it's, it's really mostly about the traffic light at Henry, Henry Turner Bailey.
Okay.
Do they have recommendations to fix it?
Well, yeah, to get like a full signal, yeah.
It's about time.
And, and.
That is one nasty place.
I don't see Greg Morse, but one of the things that came out at the meeting was that he is now the president of the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, really?
Greg is?
That's fantastic.
Excellent.
All right, bills, well, I'll do this, I move that we pay $221.10 for legal ads in the Situate Mariner on 12/26 for the accessory dwelling special permit for the 275 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, I, also $202.50 to Chesia Consulting Services for professional engineering regarding Walnut Tree Hill, and $777.50 for Chesia Consulting for the peer review on 305 Country Way for the flexible open space development, and $1,600 to Bluestone Planning Group for the, the design standards and the illustrations for the Village Business Overlay District for town meeting handouts.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to be paying them until we get the product, but I think we're just kind of setting this thing up.
When, when do we get the product?
In the next couple of weeks, I think.
Second.
So those are the, the bills.
All those in favor?
Aye. And, here, let me, well, I'll go ahead and, I'll sign those later, and then we have minutes. I move that we approve the Situate Planning Board minutes for January 23rd, 2014, and the Situate Planning Board minutes for January 30th, 2014.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Let me give you a CPC report, we voted the articles, I will forward the, the articles, so if you have the chance to review prior to the 3rd of March, I think it is, when Lisa Petten is coming in to talk to us.
Yeah.
We voted, voted to build the bike trail, we voted to skate park, voted land purchase name and properties in the, in the West End, voted some work to be done for the Historical Society, I think those are the articles under, so it's about a million and two or so, no, a million six that we voted, the expectation is we'll get a million in general, and we'll probably get about 600,000 out of the surplus, so we'll be basically spending, we'd be underspending what our current expectation is in terms of money coming in for FY15, but I'll forward that, that off the top of my head.
Do you have an update on the train shed? I know, I talked to Ann about it a little bit, she had some color commentary, but I was just curious to hear.
Do you want me to take that as a homework assignment?
Sure. I guess there were some problems when they, they sandblasted the, the supports, and when they went back to then reassemble the train shed, it didn't fit, is what she was saying, so, I was just curious, because it seems like that's a CPC project that has been ongoing for a long time.
Yeah. Bill, is the skate park planned to repair it in place, to change the design, to move it?
The short answer is yes, all of those.
Oh, good, okay.
One of the, one of the alternatives they're looking at, at the school, right, and this is what drives it, is.
Is, is an addition where the skate park now exists.
There are like a couple of places as to whether the gate replacement would be a standalone adjacent to the high school, so it would give us a complex, what, or whether it would be attached to the existing building.
Right.
And, and both of those have an impact on what the skateboard is, what we did is, we approved the funding with the expectation that when they designed the school, it would be, and if it was co-located at where the high school is, then they would be able to integrate that into the site and have the money in hand with the, with the school.
Okay, yeah, that makes perfect sense.
It also is, is not site-specific, so that if, to the extent that they, let's say that they were, the, the plan they opted for was to replace gates with a building behind the existing gates building, which is one of the alternatives, that in effect the skateboard would be extended, expanded a little bit and basically replaced where it is currently, but it would be minor repairs but mostly replacement.
Okay, but until the school is.
Right.
Decided upon, there's nothing really going to happen to the skate.
Right.
Another question I had, actually, and I, I think I probably missed it, but in the Mariner, there was the article about the, the Situate Lobster Pound, I think is what it was called, on the corner, well, it used to be the Carpet Store, right?
Yeah.
The rug store, I remember when he came before the planning board, and I don't remember like a second time, I, I think I may have been gone, or did that?
It hasn't come back yet.
No, he, yeah, they have not come back yet, the recommendation or the, the vote was that the, the applicant come back for a site plan review, I believe then they were told by the inspections, you know, building department, that they did not need to come back for a full review, that they could come back for a waiver, but they have not come back for the waiver, they've been given all their opening paperwork, but, yeah, there was nothing said that they had to come back for a waiver, apparently.
Yeah, that confused me when I saw it.
Yeah, it confuses me, too.
I was like, oh, I must have been gone.
That little stretch of Stockbridge, is that zoned business now?
No, it's zoned residential, but.
So it's a, it's a waiver or?
It's pre-existing.
Rebuilt the rebuild.
Okay.
Grandfather for parking.
Right.
And then they got a, as I understand it, a letter from the PPW indicating that the parking, that they don't need that space for parking.
Yeah, there was no problem.
No problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Having said all of that, it is now 8:45. Next item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan for Blanchard Farms, according to Curtis. It looks nice and green there. We're, we're tripping around there. It was all white. Couldn't find any of those lines or those houses.
I wouldn't want to walk it out there today.
My feet are still thawing out.
How did you update us, Greg?
Perfect. For the record, Greg Morse with me is the applicant behind us, Blanchard Farms LLC, John Tedeschi, John Barry, and their attorney, Richard Henderson. Since the last meeting, we submitted a set of revised plans. That was in early January, January 7th they were dated. We had the sidewalk with the board, which you were all in attendance at. We've had a meeting with the abutters for the project just this past Saturday at the library, and updated them on the status of the plans. We submitted homeowners association documents early on, and just today, we made a revision to one sheet of the plan set, the grading and utilities plan. That was based on a meeting this morning between the applicant, myself, the fire department, and the water department. Couple of minor changes on the plan, one major change on the plan. I'll point those out in just a mo, in a minute. Believe the, all of the major issues on this project have been addressed with the plans as you see them now. We basically made four major revisions to the project. One of them was the elevation of the site. I think we heard from the residents along Whittier Drive that everyone was concerned with the amount of fill on the site and the height of the roadway, and so what we've done is, we've asked for a waiver from one of the requirements which allows us to reduce the cover over the drainage pipe, which in turn allows us to lower the height of the roadway. That being said, it lowers the site by approximately one and a half feet, and we prepared just for a, a general visual of that, a cross-section. You should all have a copy of this. Generally shows a cross-section of the site taken from Curtis Street, Station Zero, running through the proposed roadway, all the way over to Whittier Drive. And you can see, the dashed line represents what the existing ground surface is. The bold lines in the middle here represent the proposed dwellings on either side of the proposed road. As discussed previously, you'll see that the dwellings along the western side of the road are primarily walkout basements in the back, and what we did is we took a two and a half story dwelling. We also plotted three of the house heights here on Whittier Drive, just for a reference point. This is prepared at a one-to-one scale, which was requested by the board.
So that's true horizontal and true vertical?
Yeah, one-to-one, one-to-40 horizontal, one-to-40 vertical.
I don't know, because I dumped them all in my package.
The second major revision that we made to the plan set was, again, as a result of input from the last meeting, we heard a request that we wanted reduced impervious surface and reduced runoff from the site, and so what we're doing is we're asking for a waiver on the roadway width. The roadway width is typically 24 feet. We've asked for a waiver down to 20 feet of pavement. That allows us to cut down the impervious area. It also allows the runoff area and runoff volumes to be less. We have not reduced any of our drainage as a result. We've kept our fully compliant, full-sized drainage system. So the numbers are even better now that we're reducing the impervious here.
So will it, does, the way it's designed, if it were 24 feet, it would...
It would still comply. Thirdly, Lot 7, we performed some additional perk tests. We originally had the septic system in the backyard of Lot 7. We got two additional perk tests in the front yard, so we could move the septic system and revise the grading. Again, the result of a request from an abutter. All of the remaining septic systems are primarily in the front yard, all the way around, the side yard on Lot 7, the side yard on Lot 11.
Greg, really small point, but if I wanna have my washer dryer in the basement, for example, or some kind of other water use, do I need an ejector then to get up to that septic system?
If you're on these lots here, probably not.
Yeah.
These ones here, if it's in the basement, probably, yep. They're all gravity-fed septic systems, you know, we'd expect them to be coming out two feet, three feet down from the top of the foundation, so.
Right, and, and they're not, they're not injected or pulsed or anything like that? It's just normal flow?
Traditional, conventional gravity septic systems, yes. The fourth revision is the revision that we showed on the plan today, which is a reconfiguration of the water system. We had originally proposed a looped double-barrel water main coming off of Curtis Street. Review of the hydrant flow tests on Curtis Street were subpar. There wasn't enough pressure and enough flow. So we talked with the water department, we talked with the fire department, and what we proposed is a connection to Country Way, which has a 10-inch line that was just cleaned, where there's adequate flow and adequate pressure. And so this connection comes from Country Way, through an easement, up to the subdivision road, down the subdivision road, and then comes back up and connects to Curtis Street. It provides increased flow, not only for our subdivision, it also provides increased pressure and increased flow to the residences along Curtis Street. In addition, we originally had one fire hydrant proposed. We've added two additional fire hydrants, so that now we have a hydrant at the end of our cul-de-sac, a hydrant at the middle point of our roadway. We've also proposed, because the hydrant on Curtis Street is, is relatively old and in poor condition, we're proposing a new hydrant out here, again, so that will help service not only us, but as well Curtis Street. Those were the four major revisions to the plan. The drop in the site elevation, the roadway width, the reconfiguration of Lot 7, and then the water distribution system. Other changes that we made, relatively minor or supplementary, we performed a site distance analysis. I think when we did the sidewalk, we stood at the entrance of the site and looked at the site distance, but I did submit this plan as well, which shows that if you're at the entrance of the site here, looking up and down Curtis Street, that you had the adequate site distance, 250 feet, not only in the horizontal plane with no obstructions, but you also...
So.
Close that?
Yep, thanks.
Karen, do you have anything to add to your landscaping plan, or the landscaping plan?
Well, they completed all the requirements that, yeah, for, except, I didn't remember. I did ask that the detail for the, for the lot five, to show the soil coming all the way up to the back, to match the street cross.
So that'll be taken here?
Yes.
Questions to the board?
Actually, a question for, for John. What's the road width of Northie Farm? Is it 18, is what I think, right?
Oh, boy, that's, I think that's 18.
Okay. And at Deer Common, it's 20, right?
Um, I'd, I'd have to check. I don't know what's on my head.
You know, it, it might be 20, and then it goes to 18 on the common driveway spurs. We've got two spurs that come off.
If you put a gun in my head, that's what I tell you. I tell you that it's 20 and 18.
Yeah.
So the actual road is 20?
That's, that's the way I remember it, but I would say it was wrong earlier, so I may be wrong.
Yeah, I don't...
The common driveway, I mean, you know, we, we had those spurs off when that was 18, I think.
And so, the DPW is recommending 22, is what, is what I heard, right?
I think 22 is, is the least they would feel comfortable with.
Okay. And the regulations are 24, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any specific questions, except that I guess I would be, you know, I think we've talked about this on the, the board before, about the granite curbing, and that is something that the DPW is requesting, and I think this, since this is a fairly short street, relatively speaking, that the, the granite curb would be quite nice for this, this particular development. I think, I know we've made the waiver on other developments, but in this particular one, I'm less likely to, to, to look at that particular waiver. That's all I really have to say.
Stephen?
I don't really have anything. I tend to agree with Richard on the granite curbing, and at some point, if we keep waiving granite curbing, why do we have a requirement for granite curbing too, so. So, I, I think that's it. I don't really have any other questions.
What about the road width?
Uh, well, I'm, I would go with what the DPW is asking for here. That's the way I see it.
All right. Uh, I'm all for trying to decrease impervious as much as possible, so if we've approved roadways at 20 feet, I would be inclined to approve this one at 20 feet. The same comment kind of applies to the sidewalk. If we've got a sidewalk on one side of the street, regardless of which side that is, I really don't wanna go dig up the other side of the street, put down a bunch of impervious material in people's front yards, even though they don't own it, they think they do, and have sidewalks on both sides of the street for this short stretch. I think that's frankly completely foolish. I would be very interested in, in a, a condition that might have the proponent do some repairs to the existing sidewalk, but putting in a second sidewalk, no way.
Yeah, I don't know what the state of the, the sidewalk on Curtis is on the opposite side. I don't remember. It's probably covered in snow, so you can't see.
It's been there since I was a kid, so it's probably in pretty rough shape. I haven't fixed it since then. But, so that's, that's really it.
No, I, I feel the same about the reduction in the impervious surface. It helps with the, the stormwater. The, the sidewalk, that was my feelings too, that if there's one already there, why are we, why are we reinventing that or duplicating that? It's about it.
Can I just add something? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you, you're gonna go. Sorry.
Oh, I was gonna make sure that I understood where he was in granite curbing. In favor of the granite curbing, or? Well, I know, I know that the bylaws state it, and since I've been on the board, we've, we've pretty much waived it for everybody other than entrances.
Mostly flexible open space.
Oh, that's true too. That's true too. They have been flexible open space.
We waived it on Tilden Farms, though. That was a very similar subdivision.
That was, Tilden Estates? Oh, that was flexible, though.
That was, yeah, that was plausible.
Yep. Yep, you got open space. Remember Dan wanting to access everything?
More of a traditional...
Basically, I've actually noticed, I'm Richard Henderson, I'm the person, John, John. With the, I've noticed that distinction being made since we're all the time about open space versus standard subdivision. For Chapter 41, Section 81R, grants the waiver in general. It doesn't make any more specific favoritism towards clusters than it does on open space, and it does toward standard subdivisions. It's essentially a right to waive something, and I'm not sure why it would make any difference whether it's a cluster or not. My own personal opinion is, in the subdivisions I've done, it, most, I don't know that it's used in Cohasset at all anymore. It's actually kinda dangerous. Kids fall off bikes, bicycles, they ride, they fall, they, it's just, it's just not used that much in subdivisions anymore, and it's, it's actually a bit of a safety hazard, particularly in neighborhoods with children with bikes, skateboards, scooters. It does not much to enhance the beauty of the neighborhood, and it is a detrimental, detrimental factor, but it's just not that common anymore to, to be required.
It's also a very big maintenance thing of the future. The plows, right, when the plows hit it, it gets busted up. It never gets repaired. If you look in a lot of the oldest subdivisions, it's all, it's all broken up.
Yeah, the, the Cape Cod berms can't repair either though.
Yeah, Cape Cod berm, the power rides up on the edge of it.
It's also, it is easy to repair, though.
It is. Doesn't mean they can't repair.
One thing to keep in mind, if, if you're gonna reduce the road to 20 feet and you want granite curb, that becomes really narrow then.
Yeah.
Because you don't have any...
Because that's a, you don't get...
Hard to get on the shoulder.
No slack.
When I narrow the street and I got granite curbing, and it's more difficult for one car to pass another car. If I have, if I have a car that is stranded, which seems to be a popular thing, at least in Georgia, if I have this car stranded, it's easier with a Cape Cod berm to come around and drive around it.
And with the Cape Cod berm, if, if it was a 20-foot wide travel street, you know, 10-foot lanes, you still have the 18-inch Cape Cod, so it's 23 feet of pavement, so you're still 23 feet wide, plowing purpose.
It also acts more restriction against plowing it up over to the, the sidewalk or the...
The granite does, yes.
The granite does. If I'm gonna narrow it, I mean, I, I think Cape Cod berm would go with a narrow roadway.
Yeah, that sounds right to me.
I just wanted to add, you know, something that, that Richard had said, which is that where these waivers were granted, these were flexible open space plans, and, you know, I guess I would respectfully disagree with Attorney Henderson that, yeah, there's language that allows the planning board to waive any of its rules and regulations if you find that that's in the public interest, and that's really the best thing for, you know, for the whole overall picture. Often, when that's done, there's some kind of obvious benefit that's provided. I mean, for instance, with the Laurelwood subdivision, there was open space that was transferred to the town. There could be one of these units that was deed restricted affordable. I mean, there, there are a lot of different things that you can, you know, you can obtain as an offset for that, but to just go and waive something, I mean, you certainly can do that if you want to do it, but it's, it's, it's understood with the flexible open space that the town is getting open space. They may be getting, you know, special access to it, like at Tilden Estates. They may be getting, you know, trails or, or a plan for trails. Yeah, but, you know, I, I don't know if the board sees something like that here, but it seems a little bit obscure if it's there. So, you know, it's great to talk about reducing impervious surface, but, you know, the drainage is designed to handle the 24-foot width because there's an expectation that this is gonna be, you know, accepted by Town Meeting or proposed to be accepted by Town Meeting, so, you know, so you would really have to have that. So anyway, just some thoughts on that.
Chip, I think there's a couple of other things that need to be, we talked about, where I come down on. One is, is the easement. I'm a single-lot person. I don't wanna see the opportunity to have easements overspread over two lots. The granite curb, I talked to that. The road width, as much as I like to reduce it, I'm not so sure that I'd reduce it from 22 to 20, to be honest with you. I think I'd keep it at 22. As to the sidewalk, I would think that if one was to give up granite curb, one would be more than willing to come back up and patch the sidewalk on the other side of the road and provide a crosswalk. But I'm not the one that has to make that decision. That just seemed to be a reasonable, reasonable thing in my mind. I got a horse over here and I got a horse over there. I think those were the four things that we were talking about. Oh, and the, the coverage of the pipe. I don't have a problem with coming back and reducing that. You'd reduce it to what, two feet?
Exactly, two feet of cover.
I think that's one of the arguments that's been presented when we use ductile pipe. It's the fact that it allowed us to come back if we needed. We could, we could reduce the coverage down.
So let me ask you a question. What would the Street Acceptance Committee think about accepting a 20-foot road if it was proposed?
Given the makeup...
If required to go 24?
Given the makeup of, of, of the committee right now, I would suspect that they would, would have a great deal of difficulty getting them to reduce it to 20 feet, to accept a 20-foot road.
So with the berms and a 22-foot road, you've actually got 25 feet of paved surface?
Twenty, 25 in change.
The, you know, it, it's a shame. I don't think any of the abutters are here. When we have met with them, one of the things that they liked most was, they expressed a lot of concern with runoff coming from this site, and they were enthusiastic at the meeting that we were reducing the amount of pavement here. The majority of them, I would say, probably live on Whittier Drive. Whittier Drive is only 25...
only 20 feet wide. 20-foot wide is a standard in a lot of the towns around here. Uh, if we're talking about public safety, exactly, if you have a 20-foot wide traveled way and then you have 18 inches of Cape Cod berm on either side, you effectively have 23 feet. It doesn't seem to be a public safety concern. If 20 feet is in tune with the neighborhood directly adjacent to this. I understand your concerns, but, yeah, I, I wish the abutters who are here to, to speak in favor. Everyone seems in favor of the reduced widths here.
It won't be a reduced width if somebody asks to have it accepted the town way and the town wants 24 feet.
It also.
Right? And, and so then it's gonna be the guys who own the property who have a concern.
Correct.
And when you think about what they're, what they're really getting, they're getting the, the luxury of having the reduced impact on drainage, right, without having to drive the 20-foot road.
Correct.
Isn't drainage anyway, coming off the road, is gonna be controlled and, uh, it doesn't end up on anybody's property?
No, it shouldn't.
Doesn't leave this park.
The system's designed to handle 24-foot roads, which is what our regulations say that should be.
It's not gonna impact, it won't impact the neighbors one way or another.
I, I will say, that's the reason I was asking John about a northy farm. From my own experience, if that is 20 feet, it's, it's very narrow. Uh, I mean, I, I think unfortunately, we have to get over to the point where we're almost on the grass to let a car pass, cause a lot of people have SUVs and, uh, you know, they've got their Range Rovers. Um, it's a little bit different configuration because the sightline's there, it's a very sharp curve, um, but just from my own experience, that if it is 20 feet, it's quite, I feel it's quite narrow.
Mr. Chair, if I could just follow up on your overture regarding, you said potentially, in lieu of the granite curbing, there could be some type of a moderation relative to the off-site sidewalk, and how does that carry? Is this the time? Have that type of dialogue or?
I just threw it out as a thought.
I mean, it's intriguing to me because it's, frankly, I'm, uh, in the town handover, and we're, we're going through an $8 million road reconstruction currently, and we're in the process of removing granite curbing from our subdivision regulations because of the enormous cost to the town when they're rebuilding these roads with granite, resetting them, et cetera, grinding them, getting the reveals again, rebuilding zone 25, 30 years down the road. It's a very significant cost to reconstruct roads with, with granite, and we had pictures of chronology going back 30 years ago, roads that were Cape Cod berm or some granite curbing, showing most of the granite curbing get popped, have been pushed over with, by plows, et cetera, and the Cape Cod berm, although in some places it was scarred, the plows pushed over and did not totally disrupt it as the, um, as the weight to basically mitigate the drainage of the gutter line. So, you know, we're, we're just, I think generally, we're not, uh, in favor of the idea of putting in something that's gonna need a lot of maintenance and a substantial cost, and try to fully understand the benefit of it. If there's a way that we can offset, um, those costs and apply them to an off-site mitigation, I think we're certainly open to that.
If you look at my track record, I think with the exception of entrance ways and drainage, I voted for virtually no granite. I think properly built, Cape Cod berms is, will, avoids a lot of the problems we just talked about, or you just talked about.
If it's poured monolithically to top coat.
Yeah. I mean, if it was not, then, then all bets are off, but I mean, done properly, I think that it's there.
Yeah, I think where we've struggled is, you know, I, I've, I've heard your point for a couple of years, and we've always been more about the, um, I think waiving that particular requirement, and then recently, the DPW has come back and said, no, we actually feel that Cape Cod berm, or, or granite curbing is better for maintenance, it's easier, and so we're hearing conflicting things, and that's what's really difficult, is we're trying to figure out what, what is the best, um, solution, so. And I, for maintenance, I, I can't say. I'm, I'm hearing both things, but as far as for the physical look of it, I think a granite curb looks much nicer aesthetically, but that's my opinion.
I think also you, you need to take into account who you're hearing things from. I mean, I, I, I don't know how else to put it. You know, I mean, I think the people that work for the town don't have the concern about, you know, how much something costs, and, um, maybe that's not always a good thing, but they're looking for something that's gonna hold up for the town for as long as, as it needs to. Um, if you're an applicant in front of a board, then you're really concerned about, you know, how much everything is gonna cost you, and that's just natural, but I think, you know, you all need to keep in mind what's really in the best interest of the town and, you know, just try to figure that out.
Anything else on the board?
Is there an engineering opinion on this issue? Mr. Engineer?
Throw a right in front of the bus.
No, it's pretty much.
Your direction?
It's pretty much, the only, the only time that I'd really like to see a vertical curb is when the sidewalk is right against the side of the road, so that you have that barrier so a car can't, I, I don't like saying.
On to the sidewalk.
And then the sidewalk.
Yep.
Right, you, you wanna grass strip between.
Got it.
It's a safe, that's when it becomes a safety issue with the granite, with, without granite, because you just don't want the sidewalk. So like, if you had it narrow right away, and sidewalks on both sides, it makes more sense to have vertical curbing to get that physical barrier between traffic.
So what does the sidewalk look like here? What is the, what is that?
It's along that one side.
And, and it's, I think it's four feet, at least four or five feet, something like that.
I thought it was three. Is it four?
I can, I can look at the process.
For some reason, I thought it was three.
To your question, is it from an engineering review, it's really just a personal practice? Four and a half foot grass strip. So you've got the 10-foot travel lane, 18 inches Cape Cod berm, four and a half foot grass strip, and then there's a five-foot sidewalk.
Does anyone ever use sloped granite, um, for this application? I know, I've seen it used in parking lots, and it's a little less expensive than vertical, cause there's just, there's not as much stone.
On the radiuses and on easements and, uh.
Yeah, typically not along a, a sideline of a street.
Is that right? Okay.
You usually see that if there's a center island in the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
It's usually around that center island.
Okay.
Even in my past, on the center islands, it gets driven over and it gets, you know, within a year or two.
It'll get displaced and.
That's the unfortunate thing with it, is just it's a maintenance issue and a safety issue really.
What's the process, Bill, about working on town land? A private developer, for instance, if you wanted to repair that piece of sidewalk, which is, you know, owned by the town, um, is there?
I'm not sure I know what's.
A bunch of paperwork that has to be?
Yeah, that I don't know.
Go to the selectmen and, you know, get their blessing to do it, or, or it might even be able to be done with a DPW without, without doing that.
Pay the DPW to do it, right?
Thank you, because I think that would be our preference, uh, to not be working in the, in public land, to be honest with you. I would rather make a payment in lieu versus having our own equipment on the road.
Yeah.
I think, I think we would prefer that too. I'd rather have the DPW working.
Right, and they're responsible for how it's done.
I've been in a lot of interstate toll and, and a few other companies, and, you know, general councils all, don't allow them to do that. They allow them to make contributions to sidewalk funds, but not to enter private property to do improvements or to design. They simply will not do it. Take a public liability on a private entity, it makes no sense, but contributing toward repairs is a very acceptable practice.
I think that, that would be my preference too.
I'd go along with that, even though I'm probably more for, I'm a curb person, but that seems like a sensible compromise.
One thing I'd like to note as well is, you know, benefit to the, to the town is, you know, we have added an extra fire hydrant on the entrance, which was a cost to us, and, you know, the, the additional water pressure for Curtis Street, that, that, you know, that is gonna eventually cost us, so I think that that's a benefit to the town that we're providing as well.
You couldn't negotiate the town buying the hydrant, you putting it in?
We didn't wanna really negotiate, Bill. We just wanted everyone happy, just the best we can.
No, I think we, we had a meeting with the deputy and, and, uh, super town water, and we pretty much acquiesced what they were looking.
I understand. You're being good, good citizens.
We do have the right kind of water pipe here.
So anything else on the board?
So I just wanna, if we are coalescing, is the thought being that we'd still have the 22, or, I'm sorry, um, yeah, 22 as a minimum, but then we wouldn't have the granite curb. Is that what we're thinking, or are we thinking 20 without the granite? Just curious.
I'm not thinking 20. Personally, I'm, I'm thinking it needs to be larger than that if you're going to the Cape Cod berm.
You're thinking 22 with a berm?
Mm-hmm. And I still think you need the hard stuff at the drainages.
Yeah, I would very much be for that.
And the intersection with Curtis.
So that's one of the waivers you're asking for. You're asking, gonna be asking for four, right?
Yes.
One of the other things that, um, that you've asked for before has been the granite curb around the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So why don't we come back up and vote on the, vote on the waivers and determine where we are then? The first one is a waiver from, I'll let you give me the numbers.
Section 7.2.1.8A, which is the requirement for vertical granite curbing throughout the entire subdivision, asking for it simply at the radius points around the cul-de-sac and then at each of the catch basins with transition curbing, is the proposal.
Vote the roadway length, or the width first.
Okay.
You will, you will vote the curbing.
Roadway width, sections.
I'd prefer to vote the curbing, to tell you the truth, because whether or not there's granite curb affects my vote on the roadway width.
Okay.
Well, we're the other way around.
That's, you can have your opinion.
Okay, this group is gonna vote on the, no, okay.
We, we have these all kind of listed out if somebody wants to make a motion from it.
Something to read.
We don't exactly have a, a motion, but you can say, you know, move to approve waiver from this section. Does that work?
Okay. I move, uh, that we, uh, allow a waiver in section 7.2.1.8A, which is the requirement in type two subdivisions for vertical granite curbing to be installed in, along all streets. The waiver would be to allow vertical granite curbing at the entryway for the, for the full length of the curve, plus a six-foot straight section, vertical granite curbing at the catch basins, and 18 inches, um, bituminous concrete berm wherever vertical granite curb is not used.
Missed the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, the cul-de-sac's mentioned.
Is it?
I didn't, I missed it.
No, it actually isn't. You're right, you are correct. And in addition to the cul-de-sac, uh, curve.
So, do I have a second to the waiver?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the next one, you have to sort of skip down to that one.
Oh, okay. So, I move that we allow the waiver for section 7.2.3, which is the requirement for a 24-foot roadway pavement width for minor streets. I move that we, the waiver shall be 22-foot roadway pavement with 1.5-foot Cape, is it 1.5 or 1 and 1/2 or 1?
Same thing.
Okay. Or 1.5 Cape, uh, Cape Cod berms on both sides.
Do you have a second?
Second.
To the roadway, that brings the roadway down to 22 feet?
22 plus the Cape Cod berm.
22 plus the.
Plus the berm.
Yeah.
1 and 1/2.
We're taking the 24 down from 22, right?
Yeah, 1 and 1/2 foot Cape Cod berms on both sides.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
No, whatever.
Are you opposed?
I am.
To 22?
Yes.
You wanna go to 24?
No, I wanna go to 20.
I'm, I'm misunderstanding.
Oh, 20.
I wanna, I want 22, but I don't want 20.
Right. I, I read the waiver, I'm sorry, the waiver is for 22.
So you got Bob, Bill, Stephen, and yourself in favor, and, and Bob Vogel opposed.
Correct.
Okay, so that's 422s and 120.
Well, I think you, you just had one motion. It was a majority.
Yeah, the motion was for 22 feet.
Okay.
Correct.
What's the next one?
If you can move on to the next one.
Okay. So, uh, oh, uh, I move that we waive in, uh, for the, the section 8.2.1.2, the requirement, storm drains shall be reinforced concrete pipe and shall be laid with a minimum of two and 1/2 feet of cover over the top of the pipe. The waiver should be that we have the ductile iron pipe with a minimum of two-foot cover over the top of the pipe.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Just, um, the ductile iron pipe is meeting the town's specification.
Yeah.
Take it, okay.
Yeah.
Right. And that modification.
Discussion being done? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, this is the infiltration. No.
That's the one about the, um, soil evaluation.
That wasn't even talked about, was it?
They haven't talked about that one, but you, you were gonna ask for that, for the.
Which, which one is it?
Section 6.3.4.2A.
That's the one for the, um, soil evaluation by the, um, witnessed by the town's agent.
During construction.
Was it your, um, was it your point that that wasn't necessary because the local health witnessed it, or?
No, let me just read what the requirement was. I thought I had all the test, I thought one of them was maybe not to the depth necessary. Right, and that was, this is definitely a condition that I. Okay, all right, perfect.
That would be a condition, that wouldn't be a waiver.
Is that the one?
That was for the infiltration.
That's a, that's a condition to comply with.
Right.
Not a waiver.
Okay, so we're gonna skip that, and then we go on to the, um, the access easement. The, um, the easement over the lot line, which is, do you have the number for that one?
7.6.1.
Okay. So I don't know where you're gonna go with this. 7.6.1 is.
H76.
Hey, thank you.
And was that moving it to two lot, or to, from two lots to one?
This is two lots to one.
Is that, um?
Unless you wanna try to. Unless you wanna try to modify the plan so you don't have to ask for that one.
Yeah, I mean, is this, the way that we, we did the drainage easements here, you know, they, they run straddling a lot line. It's 10 feet on either side of the lot, and that's, we look at the Sam Tilden farm, and that's exactly what they did for the drainage easements here. That's how, we provided 20.
That's a real old one. That's a real old one.
It was the most recent definitive subdivision I could find that wasn't in open space.
Yeah, that's cause they just do flexibles all the time.
Yeah, so the last definitive one in '06.
'06.
That's how it was done.
Exactly.
It was, yeah. I can't remember where I was in 2006.
Not that it matters now, we've already voted. I'm curious, if that was the last definitive, is that a granite curb?
It still provides the full 20.
I'm pretty sure it does, yeah.
The lot line right in the middle of it. It's 10 feet on either side of the lot.
But they built a whole sidewalk on that one. They built a sidewalk across the street.
Same access.
I, I'd like to just, that's why the easement is put in place, is so that.
I'll have to check that out.
You can access. I don't think that it, on one side or the other, really draws an air.
I think the point was that we, we ended up dealing with a single property owner than, than two property owners for every easement.
I understand that, but still, that's, the easement is still in place to get to that. That's why.
Yeah, that's, well, that's fine.
With a, with a width of 20 feet on one lot, now it's encroaching into the usable area of that lot, because it's encroaching beyond the side yard setback. With 10 feet on either lot, it's contained entirely within the zoning side yard setback, so it really doesn't impumber either lot very much, and it still provides the full 20-foot access. That's, that's the thought behind it.
That's gonna be an easement that's gonna show on people's deeds?
It shows on people's deeds, it shows on the plans, and it's an easement that's owned and maintained by the homeowners association. It shows on people's deeds, it shows on the plans, and it's an easement that's owned and maintained by the homeowners association.
Well, all I can say is, you know, there are subdivisions that I think we all know where there are little buildings that have appeared in drainage easements and...
I don't think by shifting it in one way or the other that it would negate that.
If they do appear, though, they should be asked to remove them because they're in their easement restriction.
We'll call you and you can make your...
So, I mean, the reason we're having this debate because...
Yeah, they don't do it.
The board feels that it's easier to deal with one person than it is two people. Is that, that's really what it comes down to, right?
I think that's what you're talking about, yeah.
Where are the easements? Can you point them out?
Here?
Two.
Here.
An easement for the water system, an easement for this access, and an easement right through here.
For the back basin.
For the back basin. The easement for the back basin, the access easement does not straddle lot lines entirely on lot 6. But the drainage easement here for the swale runs right down the property line, so the swale is...
It's on both sides.
Centered on the property line, the easement's on either side of it.
From a title, a marketing and a zoning perspective, it's not good to have any type of easement encroaching into a zoning setback area because you're approaching upon the area that's supposed to be the area in which some structure is...
Yours that you can use.
And you're building things over easements, which there's nothing worse, so that the way this subdivision is structured, it makes sense to have this style. Otherwise, you are encroaching in setback areas, which is just a really terrible thing to do if you're, you know, if you're zoning enforcement or zoning planning or building inspector, because you immediately have a problem if you have an easement running through a setback area.
Yeah, I think there's some, there's some sense to that argument.
Sorry?
So, I guess I need somebody to explain that to me. Why do you have a problem?
Well, because you said that there is the area which you can build structures, and you don't want structures encroaching on easements.
Right, and you've, you've set the lot lines here, and you can, you can adjust the lot lines to accommodate that, right?
I think the lot lines are a reflection of the shape of the underlying lot.
Certainly move this one.
I'm guessing it's also the shape of where they put the easements, too, right?
No, no, what I'm saying is, in order to create your lots, you have to look at the perimeter of what you're talking about. Once you lay out your lots, then you have to focus on where your zoning setbacks are. If you do not, then if there's an encroaching problem, then try not to do that.
Yeah, the only problem...
We're talking about what's on paper right now, right?
No, I understand, but again, if you start at the perimeter, once you have the perimeter, then you can design how many lots you go on the site. Once the lots are on the site, you have to then figure out where your setback lines are on those lots.
Well, the house could move over, there's the setback.
No, I understand that if you lock in the lot lines, then you're trying to lock everything else in.
Doesn't give an area for which one of the lots, I wonder if that...
I think what the point was, was that you could adjust the lot lines.
And I guess I don't understand the point of dealing with more than one person. What happens if 100 people, the easement is a legally pointed obligation, it's a reported violation.
It's the lot area of the town.
I defer to my town folks who have to deal with that issue.
It's harder the more people, and plus you've got an 8-foot setback for an accessory building anyway. So, you're going to be within that 10 feet on either side with two people instead of just, you know, potentially with one person. So, does it really need to be 20 feet wide? I guess that's another question.
I mean, we, I'd rather provide the full 20 that's required, and then I'm looking at the interpretation that's been signed off with its straddling lot lines versus holding it to one lot line and then reducing the 20-foot width. You know, I'd rather provide a larger easement, you know, across a lot line, hasn't been done in the past.
But, I mean, do you feel that a whole 20-foot width would be necessary to get this equipment...
Personally, I don't, no. I think you could get it in a much smaller area, 10 or 12 feet. The pipe, the pipe itself is 15 feet wide, or 15 inches wide. 20 feet is a little excessive.
And the width of the swale is...
Width of the swale down the end.
Probably 10 feet.
Top of a berm to top of a berm is closer to 30 feet.
The swale's 30 feet?
Top of berm to top of berm is 30 feet in width.
The sort of dip that you're creating.
Yeah, the dip that you're creating. The lot line is the bottom of it.
Almost moves from a swale to a valley.
30 feet deep, but by the time it's graded out.
As long as it's not a tributary, I believe.
And the grading's at 4 to 1, so it's very shallow.
So, just so I understand, the implication of this would be that if, in this case, let's say lot number 10 wanted to build a fence between themselves and lot number 11, they would have to pull it back 10 feet from the lot line.
Correct.
Outside their setback. So, it would actually be outside their required setback, sideline setback.
Right, the side yard setback is 50 feet.
Thought it was 8.
For a primary structure. Can we have just committed to conference?
Yeah, sure.
Could you grab the plane, Rick?
I think it's 8 when you've got a R3.
Well, I mean, I understand that the issue of like two people, but I just feel like, well, if it is there, like if I was, if I bought lot number 10, I'd be like, well, I can't build a fence 10 feet away from my lot line, or I can't put anything there. The same way with the other one, too, I guess.
I'm just, to me, it's like if, you know, if the standard has been...
I was just saying, if the fence is either 10 feet away, or if it's on your lot, it's 20 feet away.
I mean, just because someone comes in and asks to waive it or to do something different, that's why I'm really relying on what Laura says. And if she's okay with it being on both sides, then, I mean, we don't have to deal with it, other than the fact that, you know, at some point, if there's a problem, you're going to have to deal with both homeowners.
Mm-hmm.
And the fact of the matter is, if you looked at the actual operations and maintenance for the drainage and all that, what they have in there, people are never going to do it.
Exactly.
It's absolutely insane, it's, you know.
It's a lawnmower work.
Yeah, it tells them they have to, they have to inspect, you know, inspect their drywells four times a year. They have to inspect their gutters after every major rainstorm. I mean, it's, it's like, it's screwy stuff, no one's going to do that.
All my drains go to drywells.
Exactly, and I would, I would dare say that 95% of people have drywells do the same thing.
We have a plot. The easement is, the half of the easement is all, is all on the inside, but it's big, it's all the way, it's all the way over here. It goes right by this people's house.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is really quite a bit bigger than you need. This is about 20 feet. Pat thinks you could, you could manage with 10, so you could kind of pull this back, but maybe you do want to put something...
I thought this was the one that we had a hard time getting access from.
He said it was tight.
Yeah, so if you made it smaller.
It's tight because it's right against the house.
Yeah, with the, with the 20 feet.
That side, but it doesn't really need to be that tight, it could be...
So, in other words, you want to take the easement that's on one side of the lot and center it on the lot line?
You could move this part of the easement over, from the easement line to that top corner, is 15 feet. Probably only need 10, because that's just for access, it's not like you're excavating to the easement.
Yeah, but let's not get into waiving, like widths of easements as well. Why would we do that? Why don't we keep them all at 20, and if you want them centered on the lot lines, okay?
That solves that problem.
Lots are so small that...
That solves that problem, but it doesn't solve this problem.
Exactly.
It does, it's the same thing.
This one is still centered, the easement for the drainage, the swale is still centered on the lot line.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're talking about the access.
This is the drainage easement.
Yeah.
This is the access easement. It's adjacent to the...
So, you're talking about cutting down the access easement, but not the drainage easement?
Yeah, because they can, they can actually go drainage and access and then have it even a little bit wider, so you actually have the access. You don't need two 20-foot easements right next to one.
Right, okay.
So, why don't you just take one and make it everything?
Get equipment down, you know, where you started to pitch down here?
So, the real issue with Laura is really this issue of it's on both sides of the lot line. And is that truly a significant issue for you?
Okay. I was looking at this and thinking, this is, this is a lot that's got more area than it needs. Why wouldn't you just move the property line?
They need the flush.
Yeah, it's probably...
Oh, okay, and it can't narrow down. Yeah, 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 between the street and the house. Okay, that answers that.
People see that there's something there. Pat was just saying that a lot of towns do do that, to avoid the easement. Yes, I mean, Long Tree Hill, there's a...
You mean a monument or something?
Beautiful little shed that was right in the middle of the easement.
So, but this comes down to, there's, there's two, right? There's the one to the back basin, and then there's the one over here to the, between lot 10 and lot 11.
There's three.
And then what's the third one?
The water.
The water line.
Oh, the water one, okay.
But is that, that's entirely on lot 11, right?
It is, yeah.
That one, they put it all on one lot.
Yeah, so it's not really an issue.
They have it all on this lot, yeah, that one's not really an issue, although it's big.
For the record, this is, this is a copy of where there's three easements identical to what I'm proposing here that straddle lot lines in this one, the one definitive subdivision, Sam Tilden Farms. It's how we've engineered this thing to layout, it's how a lot of the subdivisions you've approved in the past layout, where you have easements straddling lot lines. The goal here in the regulations is that an easement is to the side of a lot, you don't want it running through the middle of the lot. And that's what we have. We have an easement on the side of lot 11 for access and drainage, you have an easement on the side of lot 10. Combine those two areas, add up to the 20-foot wide easement that's necessary. This is, this is the standard practice, how they've been laid out in the past. Really didn't anticipate this being, being an issue. When you think about the drainage system, you want as many people involved in easements and to know about the drainage system as possible. Now, you've got two people that have a very interested part in this drainage system, because they know that they both have easements here and there's a drainage system. Why are you eliminating it from people's deeds?
That's a fair statement.
Oh, it's going to be on somebody's deed. It's not going to be eliminated from anybody's deed, it's going to, wherever it is, it's going to be on the deed, so.
Exactly.
I don't ever remember having a discussion on easements and property lines.
It's a pretty standard practice. I mean, I've built quite a few subdivisions, I've never ran into it before.
But I'm saying, I've, and I've been doing this for most of my adult life, and I don't remember ever having a discussion.
Pat brought it up.
I think because usually it's on, it's been on one side or the other, most of the ones that, that the board has looked at, it's been on one side or the other. I mean, I don't think it's the, you know, the defining issue of, you know, of the year, but, but I think there's some things that probably need to be done going forward to make sure people do know that these things are there, like having some kind of, you know, marking, you know, some kind of monumentation for them on the ground, so people, you know, don't wind up putting their, you know, their swing set or their in-ground pool or whatever it is right over it.
I'm going to drive my lawnmower right over that little piece of granite, and it's going to make a real mess.
Yeah.
Well...
But you'll notice there.
You will know it's there.
The second time, you'll know it's there.
And maybe we're splitting hairs, but I mean, you could put a swing set, couldn't you? I mean, it's movable.
Yeah, you could put a swing set, but there, there are things all over town in these easements that are not possible to move. And I think one reason is that people don't know that these things are there, it was done, you know, totally, you know, innocently. So, I think, you know, Pat was saying that there are a lot of towns that do have these things marked, and, you know, maybe not, you know, maybe we can't do anything about it this time unless you do want to push for it, but I think it would be a good thing to have in the rules and regulations, just, you know...
So, would you rather have them marked or moved?
Either one is fine.
Moving them also does is reduce the possibility of half the people putting something in the easement.
You might not, you might not end up with two sheds.
Well, and I... I think marking them is...
I actually think Greg made, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Greg made a good point. I mean, as a, as a person who does have several easements on their property, you know, I talk to the other people, and I don't want to say they don't care. Of course, they care, it's their part of the homeowners association. But really, it's hard to get something done because it doesn't impact them, or they think it doesn't impact them. So, therefore, your point about having it at least be on two lots, at least you can, if you're neighbor A, you can't be saying to neighbor B, "Well, it's your problem." So, that, that kind of sways me.
You got a problem with the drainage structure, whether you have an easement or not, you're still going to let somebody go down there to fix it?
Yeah.
What's more about probably getting critical mass to do something about it, it sounds like what you're talking about. Just enough people in the homeowners association.
Right.
Who share your opinion.
Exactly.
So, where are we?
So, I...
Is it an issue or is it not?
Well, first of all, I'm still confused as to exactly what the waiver, or what you're requesting is the waiver now.
So, so the waiver, I guess, from that section 7.61, it says, "Easements for municipal services shall be provided as necessary, shall be at least 20 feet in width. Where practical, such easements shall be located adjacent to, but to one side of, a lot line." So, I guess that second sentence there, you know, the easement is to one side of the lot line on lot 10, it's one side to the lot line on lot 11. But are you looking at it...
Well, that's, that's what I'm wondering if we even need a waiver, because it says where practical.
Yeah.
For the development.
Thanks.
Okay.
I don't think we have to certify.
I don't think it is either. I think we ought to leave it as it is, other than we ought to address that access, which, which I think John was saying was really tight.
Yeah.
The access to the rear basin.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, the easement's over lot 6 here, what we provided, it's a minimum of 20 feet in width all the way back, and you'll notice that it runs up the driveway for lot 6 before it goes through to the backyard here.
Maybe that one we, you know, even though it might require a waiver, maybe it could be kind of a little more narrow so that you don't have somebody's, you know, shrub right in the middle of it or something by the side of the house.
I'd rather have a 20-foot wide easement with a shrub planted in it than a 10-foot wide easement that you need more room on, I guess.
Well, I, I mean, I think, I'm kind of moving in the direction of having bounds for these things, so I think the 20-foot just, you know, may not really work.
A 10-foot wide easement would allow a mini, a mini excavator for only 8 feet, not even. If they added 4 feet in width.
Yeah, I think this is written from like another time when people are doing things differently, but...
They have low ground impact.
Just time to rewrite these things.
Oh, yeah. But to think about equipment like going all over your yard, nobody's going to want that.
No, no.
Why would I change it so it's not, to read something less than 20 feet?
Yeah. Maybe.
Is there any reason it can't be along the drainage easement?
Or can't include the drainage easement, can include the drainage easement in 20 feet?
Well, you need somewhere, you know, to move the equipment outside of the swale, so, you know, the swale's 10.
The drought loader.
If you're maintaining the swale.
It certainly cheated over, you get down into this zone, you can't maybe do it here.
And to be honest, if he shows up with a loader or something, he's not going to go down the driveway, he's going to get over here as close as he can to the...
Maybe.
Because he doesn't want to have to fix the driveway if he's driving over it.
Oh, if it's tracked, yeah.
Yeah.
We can, we can reduce it here. I am, I am in excess of 20 feet at that location, you know, I could cut it down, just to pull it 5 feet from the house.
Pull it 5 feet away from the house, it still gives him 10 feet of relatively cross, cross slope, flat mid, going down.
Sold. Why not?
I believe the answer is that it's sold.
5 feet from the house.
So, we want...
You got to reduce it to the 20 feet.
Yeah.
Anything else that we need to handle tonight?
So, we don't even need to vote anything there?
Pat, Pat brought up something right at the beginning, the...
What, the screen?
No.
What was that?
The cul-de-sac diameter. The way that the regulations are written, it says that the outside street diameter must be a minimum radius of 50 feet. You'll see on the definitive subdivision there, Sam Tilden Farms, also a dear commons. That was interpreted as the right-of-way being a 50-foot radius, not the pavement as a 50-foot radius. The regs, again, say outside street diameter, so that's kind of open, but it's been interpreted, it looks like, in the past as the right-of-way being 50 feet, if we can clarify that.
I think that's how it's been interpreted.
What section is that?
Section 7.2... Section 7.2.1, 6C.
We don't have any input from the fire department on this?
No, but they're looking for a diagram showing how the vehicles can get out.
And what we, what we proposed was 84 feet of pavement width at the cul-de-sac, which we feel is adequate, I'll certainly provide that, that's what was provided at Deer Commons and Elm Street as well, so...
I think 84 feet is a, a lot of pavement.
So if we don't do anything, then, then we approve this in the interpretation?
I don't know, I'm still looking for it. 7.2.1, 6C.
Six.
Is there any document from the fire?
No, it was T.
Such streets shall be provided at the closed end cul-de-sac, having an outside street line diameter of at least 100 feet.
And so, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get the, your interpretation of that, how does that differ, I guess?
Well, I wasn't sure whether that meant the right-of-way was pavement.
Street line diameter. What is the street line?
I think it's always been, it's always been the, the right-of-way, which is more, I think more, that, that's our right for the applicant, I mean, otherwise, I think you have this humongous cul-de-sac.
Okay. So that's how we've interpreted it in the past?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're still gonna, you're still gonna do something on the fire truck, sort of access around the cul-de-sac?
I'll certainly provide a, an exhibit for that, that's more than adequate area.
On Benjamin Sudley, we ended up with a cul-de-sac that had an island in the middle, as I recall.
Yeah, 214 clap.
Yeah, so the design on that was for a much larger radius of the roadway itself, because there was that center island.
Be interesting to compare that, because I think it was nice to get the island.
Right, I'm, I'm looking at this, and as Laura said, you know, 84 feet of pavement, that's a lot of pavement. It would be really visually more attractive, with some sort of planting in the center of that, if it could be done, under, with these dimensions.
I can look at the one for 214 clap and see how big that was, and how it compares to this one.
I think it'll depend on, sort of, the fire truck access to everything, if you put something in the middle, it probably changes.
It does, it changes how the rear axles are gonna go through it. The original plan here, I had that at the last meeting, I had the center cul-de-sac, and we removed it at your request.
Really? I don't remember that.
I don't remember that.
You requested at the last meeting?
I definitely don't remember.
I don't remember anyone...
It was on the original plans, but it was spoken that there's no planted islands in the middle, so...
Can we revisit that?
Yeah, well, they, they could obviously fit the...
Will it provide...
I'll have to check.
...for the fire trucks?
Fire truck around the 214.
Right, no, yeah, that's, obviously, that's the, that's the driver, but it would be interesting to find out, given that, if there's any room left.
Do they give a company this issue, though, the majority of them?
Yeah, I, I know.
There's one big tree in the middle.
Yeah, one big tree, right.
Then we'll move that plant that's in the front of the...
Yeah, the roadie.
Right at the end.
Perfect.
You know, a roadie would be perfect for a cul-de-sac.
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
Yeah.
Okay. Not that I wanna wrap this thing up, but I wanna wrap this thing up. So in terms of waivers, we've covered all of the waivers. All right. In terms of open items, what do we have?
Well, we have a laundry list that we've talked about.
Do we have, anything that would not be addressed via conditions?
I...
I don't think so.
Don't believe so.
Where are we in terms of the feasibility, possibility, of looking at that sidewalk on the other side of the street, and figuring out what, what if anything could be done to that? Is that something you're willing to do?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, that if it needs patching here or there, we...
And I'm not suggesting you commit to it, what I'm suggesting is that you pursue it with the town, probably Al, DPW, and see what, what alternatives are available to that.
Right.
Yes.
Is that a homework, that's a good homework assignment.
Yep.
We, we did add the, the crosswalk across the street to the...
Yeah, that one, I think would, would be, I, I would have nothing but to expect that one, but...
Yeah.
What, what, something towards fixing the other side, going down on the other side without creating a new sidewalk on your side of the street, just doesn't seem to make sense. So having...
Yeah, that, that would probably be consistent with, if you built the sidewalk from there to Country Way, it's like, what if anything needs to be done for the sidewalk on the other side?
I think that's consistent, I mean, if the example that you've used to design this is Tilden Farms, Tilden Farms put a sidewalk in, as well as a water pipe.
Yep.
So, it, it may be a very good example for you to have picked. Is there anything that would basically come back up, because obviously we're gonna need to continue this thing to at least, hopefully, one more meeting, that we can, that needs to be addressed other than, I think that it could be under findings of fact or, and or conditions? Are you aware of it, Laura?
No.
You did, you did talk about screening, and I guess we'll talk about that the next time around, or...
Yeah, I think that's a condition type of thing.
So we should be prepared to address that. I think that's the only other item I had.
Does the applicant have anything other than things that would be addressed under findings of fact, and or conditions?
No. Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, would you like us to follow up with the director of DPW, with respect to that conversation of the sidewalk?
Yeah, what I would suggest is, how you do it is obviously your own business, but what I would do is sit there and say that the planning board's interested in looking at getting this, this repaired, and then work out, see if there's an agreeable set of options, or option that would, would work out between the two of you, and just bring that back. Right, it may very well be that, that, it may be totally cross-restricted for you to even, you to even consider that, I don't know. But I would, I think it would be a worthwhile discussion to have. Anything else from the board?
I have a, just question, I mean, I don't, it's probably in the, the, on the, this plan I'm looking at, are there streetlights shown on this plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm just, maybe they're not on here, I'm assuming that's this one.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
No, it looks like a valve, that's a hydrant, isn't it? That's a hydrant.
Blue's finger pulls on the lights.
Maybe not.
Turn them off, huh?
Oh, yeah, he goes back up and he puts the, the lights at...
As, as long as they're there, and they're represented.
Kincaid, Kincaid.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right, right.
Painter of light.
Maybe we should have that as a detachment.
Heard he went bankrupt.
What's the symbol for these lights?
Circle with a little...
Even worse.
Yeah, there's one right, right here at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Right, I can see, I found that one.
Is it this?
Yeah, it's that little...
Oh, okay, okay, it's pretty small.
Little deer tick type.
Okay.
There's another one right here, between nine and 10, one there.
Yeah, and then there's...
Oh, right here.
Guess the back corner of the...
Okay.
And one up, one up in the...
There must be one, yeah.
All right.
That's a patch base.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you.
Up right here.
I think we've reached the point where we need to continue to, for the next meeting, which would be finding the facts and conditions.
Yep.
Do we have a date for that, boss?
Oh, she just gave me the, Karen just gave me the, the list. March 27th at 8:30.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm not available on the 27th, is there any way we could do this on the 13th? It's not like I could change what I have committed to.
That's the night that you have, you have CPC at 7:30, you have scenic road hearing for National Grid at 8, and then you have 305 Country Way at 8:30.
Tough one.
And then the 27th, you have, well, the 27th is kind of right around the corner, you've got 50 Country Way at 7:30, then you've got public hearing on the zoning articles at 8:30, which, you know, has been advertised, and we were expecting that to maybe go till about 10.
Yes, I don't wanna do, 305, I wanna get 305 done.
Yep. Are you holding 50 Country Way at 7:30 on the 27th, on the 27th of February?
Yes.
Okay, well then, if it's not gonna be March 27, the next meeting would be April 10.
Don't, don't take my question, I don't want that to happen. These guys filed this on October 10, that's just, that's possible. Mark your questions. Yeah, we just, I, I just appreciate your consideration, if there's any way we can be on for March 13. Pat, I think it was two months in between the last two public hearings, would just be helpful if we could bring that date up.
Yeah, we're kind of swamped.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I can do that, because I end up that...
Do you want to, what's the last thing on the agenda on the 13th?
305 Country Way, which is at 8:30.
That's a full hour, probably.
Yeah, easily, yeah.
You have to be pretty late.
More like an hour, yeah.
Is anyone willing to, I think we did it before, where we did an extra meeting, I was okay with that, I mean, I'm just throwing out there, if you want to.
I would rather stay later on the 13th, myself, but...
Okay.
Just a personal opinion.
Yeah, I think I would too, but, I mean, if we, 8:30...
305 Country Way is at 8:30, so, you know, that's...
That's a full hour.
That's gonna be, I, I, that's...
You haven't even gotten to findings of fact.
No, that's gonna be longer than an hour.
Longer.
Yeah, that's gonna be, I think, more like...
That's why you...
Yes, I mean, it's gonna be an hour and a half.
Yeah, I think easily an hour and a half. So you'd be...
Was it 8:30, 10?
10 o'clock, yeah. I mean, I think we all have our limits with, you know, how, how long we can go and still be kind of cogent. So...
Rational?
Yeah, I think...
I can do it either way, is Richard suggesting another day, or we can go back and put it on at 10 o'clock on the 13th?
That's the first meeting in March, is the 13th?
Yeah.
How much time do you think we need for this on the 13th?
I think it'd be an hour, I think you'd have stuff going till 11 o'clock.
It depends how much work can be done in terms of conditions and finding the fact.
Well, just reading them takes a certain amount of time.